Hi, good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this special meeting before the education order. If we could please rise.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight is a meeting to discuss the Special Education Action Plan. And that is our only discussion item. I'll remind board members and people watching, this is the first of all, we many conversations, the next of all will be September 9th. So this is a preview, a chance for the board to hear what happened and first to get some input. And Dr. Jones, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation for you before we take questions tonight. And before we actually start into the presentation, I do just want to acknowledge that we do have Dr. Halligan, Halligan Toller here with us tonight. And this is really one of her first times to be able to address the public. You know, I just want to know, and I know PCG is on the line with this as well. And they made a comment last week when we were meeting with them on the action planning, just about how amazed they were how quickly that she has been able to really not only just understand the district, but really start the work. And so it's been very exciting. And I'm not sure that everybody realizes that she was on the West Coast for many years in California. When she was hired to the East Coast, she was actually hired in Darien. Her skill set here. And I'm just delighted. I'm going to turn it over to you, Stacy.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And I just want to say thank you, Dr. Jones, the board, the parents that are watching who reached out to me and the community members as well as staff. In my 18 days since I've been here, everybody's been very welcoming and has really been a wealth of information and reaching out and sharing their experiences, their successes, their challenges, and things that they want to see changed as we move forward here in Greenwich. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for that warm welcome. So tonight, we're talking about the PCG report and how we're moving from the recommendations to the implementation. We have been working with PCG over the last several weeks since the report came out to talk about what that looks like. And so we're going to present tonight the work that we have put forth together so far. And I just really want to put out there that this is the beginning of the work. So there were several recommendations and many recommendations. And so as we, as I show you when we go through the PowerPoint tonight, just note that these are examples of what we're doing and that we are looking at completion toward the end of September, beginning of October. But we have started not only the program planning work, but the the actual work work as identified in the report as well. Let's move the slides.
The master of Zoom, so just just say next slide.
Next slide.
There you go.
So tonight, we're going to be looking at the updated action planning partnership between Greenwich and PCG, as well as one of the action items is rebranding the PPS department. And so we're going to throw some names up there and get some feedback and see if anybody has some thoughts on ideas on how we want to move forward with that change of names. Next slide, please. So Dr. Jones and myself have been meeting with PCG at least weekly, sometimes twice a week for several hours, looking at creating a master action plan that we are identifying with different steps for each of the items that they have identified. And with that, we're identifying the steps as well as the anticipated timeline and the people who are involved in putting that action together and implementation. So many of the items are cross-departmental. And so we're working in conjunction with the curriculum department, especially areas such as MTSS and UDL. PCG has been very helpful in facilitating the supporting the project management and the facilitation of PowerPoints and templates and really helping to guide the practice and how do we articulate the thoughts that we have so that we can then communicate with you and the community at large. Next slide, please. So here's an example of part of the planning timeline document that we've been working together. So this is an example of some of the things that we have already started working on, putting in place, such as an updated organization within the PPS department, soon to be renamed. We have updated the the website to include the current staff as well and their contact information, as well as the PCG report itself. Shortly after I arrived, there were many questions of where do I find this report? And so really working to be able to do that step, like community members, parents, you know, can just go to the website and to be able to find that. There is a plan to further develop the website, but those were some immediate things that, you know, we wanted parents to be able to contact the appropriate coordinator and to be able to find the find the report. We've also updated different processes within the Special Education Department with in terms of data collection, registration, so that we can move some of these things forward. As we look at the different recommendations, certain parts are foundational in terms of being able to do some of the additional work. So putting processes and procedures in place within the department, as well as that organizational structure, are things that we're able to then support that further work. Another example is that we've started working on updating the procedures manual. The state has a template that we're going to be moving forward with and pulling stakeholders in together to be able to develop a manual that everybody has input into. And we'll be asking SARC to help facilitate that. So those are just a few of the things that we have already done since July 1 that would have come on. But this slide just kind of shows how we've already started some of that, some of that work and anticipate some of those things to have been completed or to have been done by the beginning of the school year. Next slide. So here's an example of one of the short-term actions that has been identified. Transportation was an identified area. So with that, we've been able to update our transportation form and our transportation process to ensure that students are able to get transportation soon after the IEP makes them eligible for transportation. So this is something that we were able to take very quick action on and met with our transportation coordinator. We talked about where the concerns are, where where our process needs to change, and we were able to move forward with that. And then we'll be communicating that with our building administrators as we go into August prior to the start of September. So that's something we were able to really, you know, jump into and complete. Next slide. The next slide is an example of one of our long-term action items. So this is looking at the MTSS recommendation. And our multi-tiered systems of support is really a collaboration between the Special Education Department and the Curriculum Department. We want to make sure that, you know, we're working together and jointly. And I've been meeting with the Curriculum Department to talk about what does that look like in terms of development support. Last year, Dr. Gabriel actually completed a needs assessment of what the district needs in terms of MTSS. And so that is starting, that started some of the work. And then Dr. Marcus has just joined on board and came to find out we put his name all over this long-term project planning that he's going to be working with me on. And he, so he and I are going to be working collaboratively to develop a district-based MTSS group, as well as, you know, being able to support the schools and move forward in developing a manual that can then be rolled out to the schools to create consistency. And from there, we would then create a professional development learning plan of how that's going to continue. Because it doesn't stop once you create a manual. It is part of the training and how do we continue consistency and fidelity of the processes that we have developed. And this also, I just want to point out at the bottom, we also have been involved, the Technology Department in terms of Lincoln, which is a tool, a data collection tool. So it's not just two departments, it's actually multiple departments working together so that we can create systems to be able to support our students. Next slide. So following this, we're going to continue to meet weekly several times. Usually we're looking at two-hour chunks to those examples that I just showed you. We've been filling those out and populating the the template and expanding each time. So as we have the conversation, it might start with, here's a couple of things. And then you reflect, you add more and say, well, there's actually some more steps in there. And so we're really trying to outline all the different things that are being, that need to be completed so that we can keep everybody on track and have a good way to measure progress towards all the different goals. Each template takes about an hour to complete. And so we want to make sure that we're capturing all of the work that needs to be completed. So as we know that some of these are short-term and some are long-term. So as I was, I started, we do anticipate this to be done end of September, beginning of October, so that we will have a complete template of the work that we're doing. And then we can then move forward to communicate that to the public. If it happens, next slide. So here's an example of what we are looking at in terms of being able to post up on the website and keep it updated. So it, we are looking at changing our culture to, yes, we can. And looking at how we can, you know, pull all of the different recommendations and move forward with those. So it starts out with, you know, just what the PCD report was and list the recommendations. Next slide. And then moves into an example of what are the roles and how is that working out into a timeline? So if you look on the right side of the screen, that was my right, that you can see how that's broken down into when we think different things will be completed. And I think this is really helpful that we can then go back in and we can say when things are completed so that we can do that on an ongoing basis to be able to communicate the things that have been, have been completed where we are. And you can look at each of the different recommendations to be able to look at that. And that would be completed on an ongoing basis. Next slide. So these are just some example names that we've been looking at to, as we're tossing around the different idea of what pupil personnel services should change to. You know, there's there's offices that are people personnel, Special Education Department, specialized in learning, specializing student equity. You know, I won't read all of those, I'm sure. But, you know, we're trying to get a feel of what is it that we want the office to stand for? When people hear about the Special Education Office in Greenwich, what is it, what's the feeling we want them to have? And so I think we, so as we've been playing with those names, that's at the forefront of our of our thought process is, you know, we really want to represent what it is that we stand for with our student. And that's, you know, providing high-quality educational opportunities for all students. And how does that look like? And how should we represent that? Next slide. So part of that and developing that vision is making sure that we stay connected with community input. And I've been talking with many parents, meetings coming up with the PCC, I've met with some of the CAC members, as well as community members, the Board of Education members, we've updated the website, we will continue the newsletter. Those are always the kind of continue and solicit input. So we want to, this, this process goes forward to keep everybody informed of what's going on and to get feedback. Are things working? Are they not working? What do we need to do differently? And so this is really a collaborative process as we go through. We've definitely made some strides already. And, you know, I expect to make further great strides as we go forward. And, you know, we want to keep that community connection and that communication going throughout the entire process. Thank you.
See, Dr. Miller, you're on.
If I could actually just add, who is online with us, but here to also help us answer questions. We do have Jennifer Miller from PCG, which you're familiar with from all the work we did last year. She is a lead on the project for us. We also have Maria Yulik, who was not part of the team before, but she has a special skill set that they have brought her into the team. Matthew Scott was part of the team that helped do a lot of the survey and that type of information for us last year. And I do want to point out, I know we mentioned, Dr. Marcus is on here, and he's in day number two in the district. So, and he is, he will be collaborating, already has been with Dr. H.
Thanks. Is there anything anybody from PGCE wants to add before we throw it over to the board?
Sure, just two things. I wanted to echo what Dr. Jones said about Stacy's start. I think we've really been able to jump into this so quickly, given her experience and background. And I think she's quickly seeing some of the themes that we saw and that were articulated in the report. So we're off to a start, as I think you could see, with a lot of detail, a lot of conversation. And our role in this is, is that structure, keeping things moving along, the conversation scheduled, keeping us focused. So you saw some of the examples of the tools that we're using, really detailed plans that we're excited over the next couple of months to share with the public. Thank you.
One discussion. Ms. Hirsch.
First of all. Very, very, first of all, to say welcome. It's such a pleasure to have you and in the conversations that you and I've had briefly. I just, I'm really thrilled to to see you here and jumping already in with two feet. And I know I had a few questions, some of which you had been able to answer already, but I just thought I'd ask quickly again in regards to the planning timeline. Just as a start, I know there were 28 recommendations and I'm beyond thrilled to see how many you started to tackle within your first 18 days. That's, that's really commendable. And I appreciate how much dedication you're putting here. One of the questions that I had had for you was, for instance, in the planning timeline document, and I know we'll be adding more, as well as touch points along the way for check-in and updates. But you were talking about the cross-departmental collaboration. I'm discussing the purchasing position. And I know you and I had a brief discussion. I was just hoping you might be able to explain that. Because I think it'll be really helpful for people to understand what that means.
Absolutely. So there is a position within the department where one of our staff is retiring. And with that, we are rewriting the job description between the finance department and myself. So this position handles the contracts, the payments out for any for professional development to any settlement agreements, making sure that that goes out, as well as we're looking at supporting Medicaid and excess cost reimbursement money. So in looking at that position, we, you know, myself, HR, finance, we all met together to really look at what are the needs of that person? And how can that person support both the finance and Special Education Department? Because, you know, we work so closely together. In another example, in cross-departmental collaboration, you know, working with the HR department in making sure that we have accountability of all of our staff. Where are they? What are they doing? Making sure that, you know, the resources are allocated where they need to be for right now. And then as we're getting ready for the budget, you know, already for next year, you know, we have a good handle of where staff is so that we can start talking about where is it that we need additional support going into next year to again implement the recommendations that we have here.
Thank you. I know, I think that'll be really helpful to help us. I know we repeatedly asked as a board, many members who are here before me, for a little more transparency when it comes to the finances and how money within our Special Education Department is being spent. So I hope that this will bring that forward. I have great hope in that is transparency. And I know you had mentioned looking through all of our staffing. And I think that that will help you again with one of the other recommendations towards looking at our outdated staffing formula, which I knew we discussed earlier. So I'm really, I'm really thrilled to see you jump right in. And, you know, there are a lot of longer-term recommendations, things that we knew would take more budget and multiple, you know, years for implementation. And I'm hoping we have the opportunity to hear from you as to where you sort of see. I mean, we, we as a board certainly can discuss where our appetite is to move forward in some of the more longer-term things as an approach. But I'd love to also hear from you what you think would be the the next longer-term steps to start taking advantage of once you've built your your base to build upon.
We've started looking at not just staff, but student INPs. What are the needs of the students? So that we can start planning for that at the secondary level, at the middle and high school level. We've been looking at balancing classes so that we're trying to stick to that 50% between students with disabilities and students without, as well as what are some other opportunities to provide some additional supports in those classrooms? So as we go through the IEPs and really understand the needs of the students, that then allows us to build some targeted programs. So one of the recommendations to really look at are continuum of services for students. And so what does that look like? But at the end of the day, it's how do we support the INPs? So we need to get in there and look at the INPs, look at the goals of the students, and then really develop programs from there. I have lots of thoughts on how to develop IEP programs and what programs would be great, but I want to make sure that they're for the students that we have. So that's where we are right now in some of that, especially in the co-teaching, the inclusion, and the more specialized programs as we're going through the IEPs, we're looking at the needs. I've had conversations with some parents of, I may not have it right now, but give me a year. And I'm hoping that I can then provide that for your child next year.
I also know we talked and you said that you have a lot of professional development plan, things coming and things being planned, some hopefully a little more mandatory additionally, to help support our general education to parent, teachers, excuse me, or general education teachers to help support the needs of all of our students. So I don't know if you have any information on that or or things that you're looking for.
Sure. So one of the students trainings that we're doing is for our building administrators and looking at we're participating with its SARC, the Special Education Research Resource Committee, which is through the State Department, and they've created eight-day PPT training. It's been condensed because of COVID during that time, but it's for facilitation of PPTs. We actually have our first session coming up on August 16th with our administrative team. And then that will go on into the school year. There'll be sessions that are virtual so that we can have our principals, our assistant principals, our special education administrators, the house administrators at the high school, the deans, I'm sure I forgot somebody. But to have all of them involved so that we can start that training right away. We also are looking at starting our UDL training during the 16th, 17th Leadership Retreat on the 17th. And that would be starting with the admin and then using some time on our two full-day professional development days to bring UDL to our teachers out in the schools. So we've started putting things in place, so long-term for the school year, as well as looking at the Wednesday PD days for some of the smaller trainings, so such as assistive technology. It doesn't need to be a full day. That's more of a site-by-site. Let's look at what you need and having somebody come and do the training for that. So we've been looking at where that PD would fall in so that our goal is, we want to be able to train our staff, but we also want them in the classrooms. So how can we do this with the structure that's already set in place? And so we've been working with Dr. Jones, as well as our curriculum department and the other departments, so that we can collaborate to make sure that everybody's being covered. The other thing that, you know, I want to point out is that we're really making a point that our special education teachers are being trained in the same, in the same programs that our general education teachers are trained in. So as we do, look at our new math program. So with big ideas, so that our specialized teachers are, you know, in there and learning, learning the materials just the same. So as we talk about, you know, our inclusive philosophy, we can be in the classroom helping, or we can be coming out depending on the needs of the students. It gives us that versatility. So we want to make sure that this is seen as work that's across both special ed and general ed. And, you know, we've been working collaboratively to make sure that everybody is receiving the training they need so that we can support the students in whatever environment that they're in. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear you're already jumping on the PD. It's one of the things that jumped out at me in reading the report, as well as the connection between the special education program and the gen ed teachers. So it seems like you've got a lot of work there. I guess as you're building out your your timeline, you may want to keep that separate timeline of PD. And you may probably should be tracking who gets what and when to make sure you've got good compliance with that.
Welcome. Thank you. You seem so, you explain everything so well. It's a really breath of fresh air. So welcome to the team. Thank you for being here. Just one question, which I know you probably don't want to answer, it's a little bit loaded. But as you say that you're, I know that PCG at one point, sort of, this was a three-to-five-year plan, which may be a little bit sad, left it here like more than one to two years. And it seems like you're moving a lot more quickly than anticipated. And you're going to have templates all done by October. Can you give me a sense, does that number start to feel like it's going to be closer to three years? Or do you have a sense of that?
So I, so I think that by next year, we can have some solid programs in place. It takes a couple of years to then fully develop a program. So I do anticipate by next year, having programs in place for some of our students. However, with training and staff and full implementation, it usually takes another two to three years on top of that. Be like, okay, now we're showcase-ready. And so when we look at being, you know, that end goal, it is, you know, three to four years. However, I do believe that in the next year, you know, two years and a half, we will have substantial programs in place. And then it's tweaking and adjusting it as we, you know, as we build that. So there's the ongoing training of any new program and the consultation that goes with that.
Thank you.
Ms. Walton.
So. Welcome to Greenwich. There you go. Of the 20, there are, as we've mentioned, and as we all know, there are 28 recommendations. And obviously, you're putting together a timeline of when to attack them. Are we taking all 28 recommendations? Is the district agreeing that we're taking 20, all 28 recommendations? And we're working to implement them in some respect? Is that the consensus?
Yes.
So then my next question is, how have you come to a way in which you prioritize, right? There, there may be or there may not be a natural order in which the progression of things should be implemented. So how do you, how do you intend to attack all 28? How do you decide on what gets priority versus another?
So some of the foundational aspects have taken priority to make sure that we have the supports in place to be able to implement the other, the other more organizational mind shift changes within, you know, within Greenwich. I think it's, you know, the conversations and getting community input, getting the board's input of where some of those priorities are. But also knowing that we are working on all of them in some one capacity or another as we're moving forward. Some might get completed faster than others, but yet they're all being worked on. I don't want to say that they're at this point, but there's one that hasn't been addressed. So while it might look like some are moving forward faster, everything has been addressed or reached out in some capacity to, you know, bring that together. So but with community input and certain things, you know, do move faster than others, we can prioritize with hearing where people, you know, where they're like, well, you know, we really want to see this now. Then we can, you know, shift our focus a little bit. Right now, we're, you know, we've taken the the big picture and we're moving forward. And it'll get a little bit more sharper in the next, you know, four to six weeks as we identify the timelines of what that looks like. And then if we need to come back and readjust the timeline on the particular one, we can absolutely do that.
So in part, and sorry, forgive me, God didn't bless me with good eyes. So sitting from there and looking at that, I couldn't quite tell the timeline charts where you see the black or the blue boxes. The timeline charts where you see the black or the blue boxes and where things are progressing in the timeline, is there going to be essentially like a master plan that's being created so that the public and the board, the community at large can follow what the master plan is on each of these activities, what the time schedule is and progression being made? So is there essentially a tracker of some kind?
Yes. So that's why we have several different layers of templates. So at the end, I showed what we were looking at posting up on the website. The other graph that you were referring to takes all that information that we had put in the other templates and then put it, put it into one master sheet so that we can see how everything falls, falls out together in one place. Because when you're going through 28 recommendations, one 28 pieces of paper, it's like, how do I line those up? But that sheet allows us to do a quick view of where everything is and where we are in progress. So there's multiple accountability points to be able to say, are we on target for how we're moving?
Got it. And then Tony, I guess this question is for you. Obviously, you have had meetings with PCG and we, the board approved a couple of meetings ago to advance or to approve costs for renegotiating for more hours. Where do we stand on those hours? Have we budgeted enough with respect to the amount of time that we are asking PCG or that we need PCG to dedicate to our administration to continue to move in the right direction?
It's probably too early for me to answer that question. I mean, I look at the MTSS. We definitely spent more than an hour. That was, that's a really big one. When we talked about transportation, it was less than an hour. So I think until we get through all of the 28 and we'll get the plan together, then it's also looking at, today we reached out as an example with PCG, trying to determine the best trainer for universal design, which is what Stacey was referencing for UDL. And so if we, if we're adding like the professional development component through PCG or are we doing that, you know, through a different trainer, that will impact also that budget.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation and just giving us, but just back to the budget. To the extent, Dr. Jones, you think we need money for this year? I think, you know, these need to be conversations we have earlier rather than later. If there's professional development that we haven't budgeted for in the current school year, I think it's something we should be talking about. We shouldn't say we're not going to do it because we can't afford it because we've all agreed this is a priority. And if we have the opportunity to engage in some professional development and it's simply a matter of dollars, I think I'd really love to see it come to the board if needed to ask for more money. And I, I think we would get support from the community to be to the RTM if we wanted that. So I just want to kind of put that out there. Don't be afraid to ask for it just because we don't have the money in the budget this year because as you know, it was a little tight operationally. But I look towards, but speaking of budget and also to the extent we can kind of be a little forward thinking because the, as Dr. Jones, I'm sure is already working on next year's budget. And I know we had at one point had talked about a placeholder, but maybe, maybe not quite a placeholder, but we can kind of start getting a sense of what we're looking at on a going forward basis. So I think, don't be afraid to ask or question things. I think like you said, the yes, we can mentality. We'll find a way. I think that should apply in the budget as well.
We are already working on the budget. We were actually in that discussion today and we worked as a, a cabinet this morning to map out just all the professional development, every professional development day, our early release day. So we're, we're getting all of that on paper right now. And I just can't even imagine by the time I present the budget in November, how much farther along we'll be knowing where we are right now. So I feel like we're going to be in a good spot by budget.
So slightly different angle and I've been out of the loop for a little bit, but so I, I came to this meeting thinking, of course, we're going to support needing to do all of the actions that are here. And having great faith that this would happen well and, and I'm even more pleased than I had anticipated being with how things are going. So thank you both because I think this is really a great start. But I was wondering, you know, we've talked, I think in the past and actually Peter Scher had, has said, you know, we want to look for a state of the art special education program. And, and sort of taking a little bit of a step back because I think these are all really critical things. You know, having transparency, having really clear identification, having, you know, a handbook that explains how we're doing things. I mean, these are all critical things, but they're not really things that are fundamentally potentially changing how we teach or how we interact with students. I've heard a little bit in terms of introducing new programs or doing those things, but I sort of wanted to go back as I was thinking about things and, you know, why is it that parents want their kids to go to Eagle Hill? Right? I mean, what is it that they're potentially providing that maybe we don't do? And, and where do you find that balance, for example? And I'm so far from not a special ed, you know, person, but that balance between, you know, inclusiveness and, and, and having students as much as possible in the classroom and supporting that, which I think is extremely important and trying to get them to AP classes and music and all of those things that they may want to do. But also, you know, making sure that, that we are also looking at where is it really appropriate potentially to pull a student out? You know, is it, and again, I don't know the specifics, but is it dyslexia or is it autism? Are there other things that we want to be evaluating? And is that something that we've been doing well or is this something that we need to change? And at what point is this a superintendent? What, what point is this a board conversation? But are there things that we may want to approach differently? So I think there's sort of a different level of thought that, you know, we want to include there. And not to let anyone waters, I'm sorry, but you know, are we using right tech as well as we should be? Or are there, you know, hands-on programs that might be good for students who have emotional difficulties? And might that work well for them? I mean, are there other things of those sorts that we should be thinking about? And I know that when we have changed alternative high school, for example, and again, I haven't been around, but have we followed up? Are there students that have fallen through the cracks that, you know, we're benefiting from that in the past? It may not be benefiting from the new system. So I think also looking at a bigger picture, are there things that we should be doing that would improve or change how we're addressing the needs of these things and others beyond clarifying and, and really optimizing the processes? Is there more beyond that that we should be thinking about? And I don't kind of know where that happens or how we look at that, but I think that's another piece I would want to think about.
So there are some recommendations from the PCG report that directly address that, such as the programming and the continuum of options. So being, so when we look at inclusion on one hand and then special programming over here, you have co-teaching in the middle as well as you said, programs for students with significant reading disabilities, dyslexia and even RSLD students. So yes, we're looking at that. So some of these are foundational pieces. So if we can't have a PPT that runs smoothly and the way we need to, then we're not getting to a point where we're addressing the needs of the students. So that's why we really try to get that foundational stuff so that we can then get to that other point, that, that other part. And so yes, we are looking at the programming and that's part of doing the needs assessments in the IEP. So where are the goals? So our students who are going to Eagle Hill, what is in their IEP that we can't do here in Greenwich that we need to start doing? And so we're already started looking at some of those and having some of those conversations with the parents. As I said, like, we might not have it right now, but we will. I, I promise that's, you know. And so being able to identify that and that's where we need to look at. What is the programming of, of the students that we have so that we can do that? There's always going to be some students that may need to go to a special program and that's why there is a continuum. But for the vast majority, we should be able to serve them here in the Greenwich Public Schools. And so it's developing those programs and then working with staff and how do you decide which program that a student might need to go to? Or how do we bring that program into a school to be able to meet those needs of the students? So that's definitely in the forefront of that. So that, you know, we've laid the base so that now we can build some of that, that other, those other components.
So as a follow on to that point, right? It's saying there are, what is Eagle Hill offering students that can, that maybe we should be offering here? In that component, in that discussion, is it including a, a cost analysis? How many kids are going to Eagle Hill and what are we spending to send them there? Versus bringing those services in-house and then can we do it better? Because, and not saying that we couldn't, but I'm saying that Eagle Hill's infrastructure, again, just an example, but Eagle, Eagle Hill has the infrastructure and it's set up. We would be starting with infrastructure from ground up and building. What is more from a cost effective basis? I want to, are we having those conversations as well as when we're deciding? How are we going to create? How are you going to make special ed better for all of Greenwich? But what does, at what cost and what is, what makes more sense?
And that's again, looking at what are the needs of the student population? So, and why there is a continuum of out of, out of district school placements? Because not all schools can offer all programming. Though the larger you are as a district, the more options you have and be able to provide programs because you have the cost benefit in that you have a number of students that you can bring those resources into the district. When you have very small incident, low incidence populations, that's often when we need to look at some of those out of district. So as we're looking at the IEP and the needs of the students, that is something that we definitely take into consideration. When we look at reading, we have a large number of students, not just those that are going to Eagle Hill, but students who works here in the Greenwich Public Schools who need that additional reading support. So developing a reading, you know, additional reading supports and training our teachers to work with students with dyslexia. Is it just about bringing students back from Eagle Hill, supporting the students that are already here? So when we look at those kinds of programs, the cost benefit is really that we're able to provide this, the best education here to the students here. And some of those students might be able to come back and join that and, and be reintegrated into the, into the programs. And our goal is always looking at the, the least restrictive environment and how are students, you know, with their most difficult peers? So those are all the different things that you factor into as you're doing some of this program development.
I wish Peter were still here because he and I had this conversation in the meeting with the prior director. And we talked about whether we could do a specialized program in a building and have parents choose to go to that program. What we got, we can't do that. Our response was, if you offer it as a choice, yes, you can. So thinking about how we push into individual schools, but also whether there's an opportunity to have a learning academy, a, you know, six month academy where the students can then go back to their programs. It's something we've been unwilling to explore, but I think hopefully there's an openness to.
There's absolutely an openness. One of the projects that I have worked on previously was opening a philately center in Marlon, in which we partnered with Rockville University and we hired Orton Gillingham Fellows to then train staff. And it was also a place exactly like you were talking about, that some students might need to come for additional support. It's a little different in the COVID era than it did, you know, two years ago. But, you know, during the summer, it's a place for very intensive and then, you know, to go back during the school year. So absolutely, there's a lot of very interesting things that we can do programmatically to be able to support the students. And I'm, I am happy that the board is open to looking at those creative solutions because I think that that works best then for our students and being able to provide them the services they need.
Now, I, I know that there were a lot of, within those 28 recommendations and some things that were furthered out, there were some discussions, this is what you and I had spoken about earlier, in creation of new ways of teaching and our students of, of, with all different types of needs. Those with, you know, reading difficulties, dyslexia and other things earlier. And I, I hope that, you know, when we get to that point of having that discussion, you know, I think we have reached a point of openness to see what, how, how we can revise, how we educate our children, provide them what they need to become the best versions of themselves that they can be, no matter what their needs are, that we will have a, be able to bring this back to the board as a discussion because, you know, this, this will impact all of our students. The sooner we can discern that a student has a need at a younger age, the sooner we can get in there and help them and the sooner they can thrive. And I'm personally looking forward to having that discussion, whether we are looking at reading intervention. We are looking at short-term specialized programming or training, more teachers bringing more in, whatever it might be. But I, I am a big fan of under-promising and over-delivering. So once we start to get our feet on the foundations of these things, I'd love to be able to hear a little bit about more numerous different ways of looking at, at teaching our students and supporting every single one of them and their needs.
So I wanted to go back, I know you said you were rebalancing some of the classes at the secondary level. It's one of the concerns is are we also making sure that there's support centers? We'll take a while to fix all the staffing hiccups you're going to find along the way. But as you're rebalancing those classes, we need to ensure there's proper support in the classroom. So whether it's co-teaching or extra aids, can you talk about how you're going to deal with that?
Sure. So right now we're looking at the, the 50% in, in terms of someone's classes might be at 60 or 65. So let's move some students and rebalance. And then we look at what type of class is it? So and how many students are in the class total? So if we have a larger class, we want to be able to look at how we can provide that additional support. And that could be through co-teaching, that could be through additional para educators going into the classroom. Depends on what the class is. There are some classes at the high school when we look at the numbers, if the numbers are, it might be 78% you know, special education 504, but it is a class of 12 students. And some of that has to do with course choice. You know, if there's no other students to balance it out, this is, this is our balance, but what we need to look at is how big are we making the class? We don't want to make a class of 25 students and have almost all of them special education. So we're looking at then lowering some of the class sizes as well. In addition to can some additional staff come in to, to support that? We are looking at the high school is, are there opportunities for co-teaching? Especially in the ELA, in the English and the math area. So I had those conversations with Mr. May today. And, you know, we're moving forward to see what we can do at the high school to be able to support in, in that specific area like that.
All right. As I said, this is the first of, I think, many, many conversations we're going to have. The next one will be September 9th. So if this is what you've done within your first, let's say, 20 days on the job, I can only imagine. We're looking forward to continued progress.
One last thing, you know, I wanted to say, I, I wanted to remind you, I will send you some of the policy, PGC policies that we need to revise based on change of state law and hoping to get your input on that. And we talked about the PCG. And then the last thing was, the one thing I didn't see in here that I think would be very helpful, especially at the start of the year, so looking at is the transitions from elementary, preschool to elementary, elementary to middle, middle to high school, especially at the start of the year to get some good input and information there.
With that, also thank you, thank you to the PGC team that's joined us virtually and, and they're listening intently. And, you know, hopefully they're, they're hearing. We want to just keep pushing forward. With that, Mr. Kelly is not here. Is there somebody, Dr. Francis?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to second that. All those in favor, personally, we can do this. We are unanimous, secure and adjourned. Thank you, everybody.